Meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Gueye will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present. And I'm on Zoom due to an illness.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Present. I am also on Zoom. I am in Orlando, Florida. I'm currently alone. My wife and children are in the next room.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Gueye.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Senna.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor James Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you want to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. First, I wanted to address the budget, which is, of course, our annual operating budget, which is on tonight's agenda, and would like to thank the Alderman Dowd and the Budget Committee for all of the effort that you all put in over a number of weeks regarding your reviews of the budget. I know that it's a very busy time and requires a lot of work, so I really appreciate, and I know many people do, everything that you've done. Now, a budget, of course, is never perfect, and as they say, reasonable people can disagree about many budget items. There are two actions, there are some amendments that were proposed by the Budget Committee, and two of them, I at least wanted to express my reasons for doing them. Number one has to do with economic development. We included, for the first time, in the economic development budget, money for a trailer with supplies that would enable us to have block parties in any neighborhood in the city. And the way this would work is the Public Works would deliver the trailer. There would, within the, the trailer would be tables, chairs, games, a tent, coolers, everything that a neighborhood would need to set it up, so that they don't need to organize anything. They just get the people together, and the equipment will be there for them, and they can hold block parties. Now, in this age of alienation, which I think we're in, to me, this seems like a very positive thing. The, I know, at least in my neighborhood, we hold this football game annually on Thanksgiving Day, and, of course, these would be more summer block parties, but it's incredible. You get to see people you haven't seen in a long, long time, and many people turn up. So for $15,000, a single-time expenditure, to me, it seems worth the money for that. Number two, I wanted to address, I think, a more difficult subject, which is the raises that were proposed for the leaders of the fire department. Now, there's no question, the fire department does a great job, and so does Chief Buxton, who is here. I consider him a really, really good fire chief and a very intelligent person, who we're lucky to have. The Fire Commission has proposed that the salaries be increased, at least, in my judgment, more than is good, for the following reasons. Right now, the superintendent of schools, I believe, makes about $183,000. The police chief, Chief Rourke, makes $181 and change. And under the, now, and Chief Buxton, I believe, and I think we're talking about in the next fiscal year, and Chief Buxton, the chief of the fire department, were the budget to go, were the current salary schedule to go into effect, would make, I believe, $165,000. So he's clearly paid less than the others, and maybe an increase is warranted because of that. The, but, what I'm concerned about is if we raise the fire chief over the police chief and the school superintendent, of course, we will get requests from other departments that other people get raises, and the fire department raises aren't just for Chief Buxton, but the other very professional, capable people who are assistant chiefs and deputies, they get the raises as well. So we've seen in the past that these raises in one department can ripple throughout city government, as others, you know, use that as a point of comparison. The superintendent of schools and the police chief have always made more than the fire chief, you know, throughout history. I get the point that more separation is needed between the ranks in the fire department, so I guess I'm suggesting that some compromise could be reached where Chief Buxton and the others would get a raise closer to the, say, the police chief, but not over and above what the police chief and the superintendent of schools make. But again, reasonable people can differ, and finally, we are in a salary study right now. We've got an independent consultant looking at all these salaries for all non-affiliated, that means non-union, employees, trying to determine where we rank with respect to other municipalities in our region, including southern New Hampshire and northern Massachusetts. So it may be, you know, if we find that a raise like is proposed is justified, then, well, maybe we should do that, but at least at the moment, I, again, I take the point that maybe the gap shouldn't be so great, but I'm suggesting, and I don't really even know how we'd get to this, but some kind of compromise might be, might be appropriate. Second, or next, I did go to Dover today for a meeting of the New Hampshire mayors, and the focus was on housing in Dover. A lot of projects going on, facing the same kind of problems that we face. Houses that are just going through the roof, you know, rents have jumped 33% in one year, so they have, of course, similar problems that we do. And we looked at one development that was particularly interesting, which was a development done by private parties with the city's assistance in the form of increased density, but these are tiny houses, so there are forty-some, 42, 45, I forget the exact number, being built. They're not all completed, but they're all, some of them are occupied, on about 13 acres. And they, they have, you know, a small living room, a small kitchen, small bathroom on the first floor, and then going up, there's a very steep stairway up to a loft, up above, where the sleeping area is, and these rent for $1,200. You need the participation, the active support of a private party, because there is not government money in this. There's no federal money and no state money. They're doing it on their own, but as a result of the density addition that they were granted, as well as a very efficient approach towards the construction of these homes, they were able to, they were able to, they're able to achieve this. And again, these are rentals. They are not for sale, but still, remember, the fire department, police department, teacher could move in there, you know, certainly no more than two people could be in a single unit, but $1,200 a month. I mean, it was pretty impressive and very interesting. Otherwise, they, you know, they have a riverfront development, other things that are interesting, but that was particularly of note, I thought. Third, Madam President, Doria Brown is going to speak today on the rates that New Hampshire, the New Hampshire, well, National Community Power, New Hampshire Community Power, will be instituting, beginning in August, again, undercutting the ever-source rates by a significant amount. So I want to thank Doria and her associates at National Community Power for making this possible for us and for other communities. Dover is also part of Community Power, and Concord, I heard today, is going to be launching in the fall, so the group of communities that are part of this is expanding. And finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention the Pride Parade, which was this past Saturday. It was a really nice parade, even though it did rain. We had a lot of people show up. Megan Karen did a lot of work to make it possible, so I want to thank her, and thank everyone who marched in the parade, and just everyone who participated. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Response to the remarks of the mayor. Alderman Lopez.
So I've been organizing block parties for eight years, and now, two weeks after this, what?
Well, you, you know, we'll show up with a band.
I had a wagon and a segue.
What? We'll, we'll help you organize it with games and the like.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
It is a very good event, and I agree, it helps morale a lot.
Other comments? Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So Mayor, you talked about the raises for the fire department, and you're suggesting, you say that there's, that we're conducting a salary study of unaffiliated employees, and so, and that you might be willing to agree to a compromise, so my question is, when is that study going to be completed? And if the study shows that these positions should be increased, would you be willing to propose a, you know, some kind of a transfer from surplus or some supplemental budget item, or how do you propose that we would?
Well, I think when we get this, of course, it, they, the first question, when, I think we're expecting it by September, and it's looking at more than the fire department, so, but it's looking, so I think we, we should, if we find that we are underpaid in any area, we want to be competitive. We are having trouble finding people in various positions, and we, I think, need to equalize with other municipalities. In the short term, you know, if, I get that the problem that the fire department has articulated, and maybe I should have addressed it before now, but the, you know, they're worried about the separation that exists, which is minimal. Deputies do make overtime, but there is not that much separation between the various ranks, moving up from captain to deputy to assistant chief to chief, and the point of the commission is, they want to create more separation, to create incentive for people to move up. Okay, that seems reasonable, right? But should we pay, should the fire chief be the top-paid employee in city government right now, you know, as a single unilateral action? Again, we've always maintained, for whatever reason, school superintendent number one, police chief number two, fire chief number three. Now, maybe the fire chief should be closer to the police chief, and certainly, that's the kind of compromise that I would, you know, I don't know the magic number. I mean, I don't have a magic number. If, if the board wanted us to come up with something, maybe we could talk to the Fire Commission and come up with some idea, if they were willing to consider something other than what they've asked for. Again, I, you know, I know the board supports the fire department and thinks they do a good job, which I agree, and, you know, I've been personally touched by their services, so I appreciate it. But from a, from a citywide perspective, I think we want to take an organized approach towards looking at the salaries of the unaffiliated employees to see which are underpaid and which, you know, which are not. But, and finally, returning again, I get the point of the separation, but could we achieve more separation by a more modest package of increases?
Alderman Jettie.
So I'm left with a dilemma. You're saying that, you know, that maybe we ought to increase the pay, but you don't know what that would be, and we're voting on the budget tonight.
Yes, you are, yes.
Are you asking us to vote against that, in that you're, you're going to work on some compromise that you will be able to affect sometime after this meeting?
You know, in a way, I feel badly, because I personally respect Chief Buxton. You know, I mean, there's nothing against Chief Buxton. He does a great job. He's, you know, his father was chief. I mean, we couldn't ask for anything better, in reality. But the other guys, you know, Chief Rourke is good as well, so how would we accomplish it? I, you know, we could, if the boards expressed a sentiment that we would like to see at least a moderation, maybe you just ask us to do that, and we meet with the Fire Commission and see if we can come up with something, but maybe you pass the money that's there, you know, because I don't have a magic number for you, and maybe I should. But I don't have a magic number, but I just think putting the fire chief over the other two for the first time as a unilateral thing is going to create a precedent that will play out over time, and you'll see more requests for increases.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Yes, I have two items. One, adding to the question from my colleague to my left, if we did vote for, and maybe it's not appropriate to ask this question, and maybe when it comes up, voting for that number just puts it into the budget as a placeholder, does not necessarily mean that they're going to get it, correct?
You could argue that, yes.
Okay. The other comment I want to make is about the tiny houses. When I was up in Concord, tiny houses were quite controversial, and I think they're great, and I'm going to go on the record as saying that ADUs, I'm not so happy with, but tiny houses or community of tiny houses, I think, is an incredible kind of thing, and I speak from a person who had a tiny house named after them. We used to call it Patty's Little House, and that's because when I, right after I was born, my parents couldn't afford the rent that they were paying, and the house got too small, so my grandmother told my father he could have the chicken coop, and he changed the chicken coop into a little home that had a tiny little kitchen, a tiny little place to eat, a tiny little living room, and you had to pull down the, would be what we would think of as an attic staircase, to go up to have two bedrooms, one on each side. So I think tiny little homes are a great starter for young people, even that may have a small child, so I'm all for that, and I'd love to see some of that come to Nashua. Thank you.
I mean, I think we should understand that the, there's more open land in Dover than there is here.
Yes.
I mean, the, the population of Dover is 33,000, in a community about the same size in terms of geography, you know, square miles, as Nashua. So, I mean, we're three times as dense, nearly, and there's not nearly as much open space, so this was a parcel that's kind of near some neighborhoods, but, you know, it's not injecting, really, itself into a neighborhood exactly, and if we had something like that, it would be a very interesting project. Whether that exists, whether that parcel exists in Nashua, I'm not sure.
Thank you. Alderman Dow.
Yeah, just a procedural thing. The amended budget is looking to put a little over 99K at the salary adjustments line, which doesn't automatically make new salary requirements for the chiefs. It's just there. Wouldn't the Fire Commissioner have to come in and say, these are what we want to use for salaries, and wouldn't that ultimately come back to the Board of Alderman for final approval?
I'm not sure. Steve, Attorney Bolton, do you have a thought on that?
Yes. Yes, I have a thought, and yes, I believe the answer is yes.
But again, I, you know, if, if the sentiment is, look, we need to give the people an increase to achieve the goals that the commission has articulated, and maybe to recognize that the gap between police and fire is greater than it should be, great, but, yeah, I've, I mean, I've let you know my thoughts, concerns about fully implementing that number, those numbers.
Just as a follow-up, even if we approve this tonight, doesn't mean that we'll spend all of it, so we could come to a compromise with the Fire Commission as to arrive at a salary structure that the Board of Alderman agrees to.
Yes, and given that sentiment, I would be glad to meet with Chief Buxton, bring probably Tim Cummings along, maybe go to the next Fire Commission meeting and talk with him about trying to reach a solution that meets their goals and doesn't create as many, many potential problems.
All set. Alderman O'Brien. You're on mute.
Thank you, Madam President. Basically, my comments are to the mayor. As some of you know, I had a career with National Fire Rescue. I was a deputy chief for 15 years. Lived under this system for those 15 years. My predecessors lived under it before me. It's like a leaky roof. What are you going to do? Going to continue to let it leak, not recognize that there is a problem, and spend the money and fix the hole in the roof? And in this situation, this has long been a problem with National Fire Rescue. It's affected the qualified people who may be considering long-term careers within National Fire Rescue. Maybe somebody should ask Chief Buxton. I think we all know of somebody who has loved this city for more monies and better circumstances. That's shameful. Shameful. So when not is the right time. And as a father, myself personally with the family, I have no favorites, so why is the police chief favorite to the fire chief, or the fire chief favorite to the police chief? It's basically paid upon what the worth is of the person, and I, and the position. And I think in this type of situation, I will be supporting the budget in its attack, including monies, doesn't mean I won't be in favor of some future type of compromise, but I'm not going to let this problem get swept under the rug again, and that seems to be the only thing we have done, a long history of what we have done, is sweep this problem under the rug. So I urge my fellow Aldermen to support with me in National Fire Rescue's plea of trying to even things out, and have no favorites between police or fire or anything, but compensate people for what their net worth is, and I feel that both are great services, but however, it's time that we recognize there has been a problem with NFR, and it needs to be addressed. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Anyone else on Zoom want to speak?
No.
No? Okay. Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Alderman meeting of May 28th, 2024, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Brendan A. O'Donnell, Assistant Attorney General, regarding Nashua, New Hampshire, proposed charter amendment.
There being no objection, I will accept the communication and place it on file. Without objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for a communication that was received after the agenda was prepared.
Communication has been received from Doria Brown, Energy Manager, regarding National Community Power Fall Rate Products.
There being no objection, I will accept the communication and place it on file. Now, we have a period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have eight speakers signed up. Doria Brown.
Hello. It's been a while, so it's nice to see you all tonight. Good evening. My name is Doria Brown, and I'm the Energy Manager for the City of Nashua. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening regarding upcoming changes to the National Community Power Rate Products. Starting with the first meter read in August and continuing through February 2025, we will be implementing a new rate product. This change pending my designation at the Community Power Coalition Rate Setting Meeting on June 27th aims to enhance our community's energy independence. The most notable change is the introduction of the National Community Benefit Rate, our new potential default rate product. This product will include a charge of 2/10ths of a cent per kilowatt hour, which will be allocated to the National Community Power Reserve Fund, which we have already been accumulating since the launch of the program. It is important to note that this charge will only be applied if the total rate remains under the ever-source utility default rate, which I'm confident we will be able to do on the 27th. For the average household using 600 kilowatt hours per month, this equates to an additional $1.20 on their monthly electric bill. The funds generated from this rate will be used to invest in locally-owned energy projects that can further drive down our electricity rates, and to fund programs that can directly benefit National Community Power customers. Any expenditure from this fund will require Board of Alderman approval, ensuring transparency and alignment with the city's aggregation plan. In addition to the National Community Benefit Rate, we will continue to offer a variety of rate products, including Granite Basic, which will be an opt-down rate that doesn't include the 2/10ths of a cent adder, Granite Plus, which will feature 33% renewable energy content, Granite 50, which will have 50% renewable energy content, and then Clean 100, which will have 100% renewable energy content. The timing of these changes is critical. We have been working closely with the Community Power Coalition to align with their rate-setting schedule. The recommendations from the Coalition CEO
One minute.
were received on June 24th, and we must confirm our product and benefit rate charges by June 27th. This swift turnaround is necessary to ensure that we meet operational timelines and provide our community with the best possible rates and options. I understand that these changes may raise questions, and I'm here to provide any additional information or clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matt Sullivan.
Good evening, Board members. It's not been a while. I think I was with many of you last night. Matt Sullivan, Community Development Division Director, here to speak on behalf of R24061, an item that we are requesting suspension of the rules and allowance of a second reading this evening, with this just being heard at last evening's Budget Review Committee. This piece of legislation allows the City of Nashua, and particularly the Nashua Transit Service, to enter into revenue contracts with five specific outside entities with which we provide transportation service support outside of the City of Nashua and into the City of Nashua. And I provided the details of these contracts to the Budget Review Committee last night as part of their meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions that may arise when this item is hopefully heard later in your agenda, but I also wanted to quickly just explain one comment that I had actually made in error last night before this legislation proceeds. Specifically, Alderman Jettie and Alderman Sullivan had asked me a question relative to the differentiation between two specific hourly rates that are contemplated across those contracts. My response had included an explanation that the differentiation was, in fact, that the service hour starts at a different time. the service hour starts at a different time in different contracts. In fact, that's actually not the case. The difference between the two rates in the contracts is that one of those rates actually contemplates matching funds from some of the federal funds that we receive through our fifty-three oh seven money. In short, our service takes about a hundred and ten dollars an hour to run. One-half of that results in an operating cost of fifty-eight dollars an hour or thereabouts. The other fifty percent of that we pay out of our fifty-three oh seven allocation that comes through the federal government. However, in the case of South Eagan Valley Transportation Collaborative and our new relationship with National Regional Planning Commission in the town of Merrimack, we are not applying those federal dollars, and therefore, the cost of providing this service is the full one hundred and ten dollars an hour. So why are we not charging a hundred and ten dollars an hour to those two contracts? The answer is that in those circumstances, we have actually backed out our ongoing administrative and fixed costs that are provided no matter what by the rest of the service. This includes our dispatch and some of our other fixed administrative costs. And so we've reduced that hundred and ten dollar an hour rate down to seventy-four dollars an hour. But again, it resulted in an increase above and beyond the fifty-eight that we were contemplating in the other contracts. Wanted to provide that clarification in the interest of accurate information being conveyed, but happy to answer any questions as the board goes through its deliberations tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Wolf Rosenblum.
Mayor Donches, President Wiltshire, Board of Aldermen. Tonight, Stephanie Wolf Rosenblum, forty-seven Berkeley Street, and Board of Health. Tonight, you'll consider legislation on the future size and composition of the Board of Health, specifically adding two additional members, and prescribing those positions as being filled by a nursing social worker. We, the Board of Health, agree that community boards benefit from a diversity of perspectives and expertise, and it's for this reason that we have always welcomed and indeed have extended invitations to professionals with subject matter expertise. Like you, we also continue to welcome the presence of our community for public comment, which is a permanent Board of Health agenda item. As we relayed in our prior testimony, there are eight nurses in our public health department, and we have multiple staff trained in psychology, including a licensed clinical social worker, as well as those trained in public health and epidemiology. In addition, Director Bagley has both bachelor's and master's degrees in nursing, as well as a master's degree in and certification in public health. As you know, success of this complement of staff and board members who regularly engage in collaborative dialogue achieved successful reaccreditation by the National Public Health Accreditation Board. Nonetheless, we always look to the future needs of the Board and our community. It is for this reason we had a robust discussion at our last meeting about the expertise that exists within the public health department and how our discussions and recommendations to the Board of Aldermen could be enhanced by additional perspectives and expertise. Staff and board members alike expressed interest in adding expertise from areas including but not limited to the business sector, educational professionals, environmental specialists, or the faith community. It's our understanding that the present legislation would only be submitted for public ballot in the fall of twenty-twenty-five, and this timeframe would give ample time for thoughtful and collaborative dialogue about the future composition of the Board of Health. As such, we strongly recommend and respectfully request that the Board of Aldermen consider an amendment to this legislation that will enable flexibility in Board of Health appointees rather than to be bound by the prescriptive language embedded in the present legislative change to the city charter. This will position the boards to respond to future and changing needs of the community rather than submitting legislation that will limit the newly-added members such that there will be duplication of expertise that already exists. Thank you for your consideration.
Myra Nikitas? Oh, I'm sorry, Bobby Bagley.
Good evening, and thank you. Bobby Bagley, Chief Public Health Official for the City of Nashua and Director for our Division of Public Health and Community Services. I'm here to speak on R-24-060, which is relative to the acceptance of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars from Delta Dental into our Public Health and Community Services grant activities for a program that's called the Smiles for Tomorrow. This is an oral health hygiene program that prevents dental caries in children, and it consists of two primary initiatives. This program will utilize elements of evidence-based programs. One in particular is My Smile Buddies, a program that we are doing right now as a pilot through Delta Dental that allows for community health workers to go into the homes of parents, provide information to prevent dental caries in preschoolers under the age of six. Right now, we have two community health workers that are trained to deliver this program in the community, and they will continue to do this as a complement with the program that is delivered in the school that Myra Nikitas will speak on as well as a part of this collaborative initiative.
Good evening, Myra Nikitas, Registered Dental Hygienist, served by Public Health Hygienist, co-founder of Traveling Tooth Fairies. Just as Bobby was speaking about the My Smiles of Tomorrow, my hope that is that you will accept these funds so we can carry out this dental initiative for a school-based cavity prevention program that I have been involved with. The school-based cavity prevention program involves services such as dental sealants, application of fluoride, silver diamine fluoride, oral health screenings, and also just being a liaison to connect children to a dental home or dental provider in case of an emergency or any dental infection. I'm very dedicated to this program. I know that I have spoken to you not so long ago about the sealing smiles across New Hampshire. I was a co-founder of the Traveling Tooth Fairies, five oh one C three organization in hopes to continue the sealing smiles for the Nashua School District. The program came to the Nashua School District because of the oral health program putting on screenings for third-grade students in the whole state. Nashua students had rated the highest in dental caries, untreated dental caries. So that was a stab to my heart, folks, because I'm a dental hygienist, I'm trying to prevent cavities and disease and promote oral health. So my hope is that we will be able to carry this dental initiative on and for the future. So with this, your acceptance of these funds, myself and my dental assistant who is fluent in Spanish, will be able to carry out this dental initiative and provide care for these kids. Our hope is to reduce barriers for kids in accessing dental care and that we go to the schools providing these services for these kids. Since November fifteenth of twenty-twenty-three, up until the last day of school, we provided over eight hundred and twenty-three students with dental care, oral screenings, and placed over six thousand dental sealants for these kids. As you know, eighty percent of dental decay is prevented with a dental sealant. These is evidence-based services that we're providing, and my hope is that you all accept this so we can carry on and be the best in New Hampshire and say we rated number one and no dental caries. So thank you all for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Paula Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Paula Johnson, fifteen Westborne Drive, right here in Nashua. First on my agenda to speak tonight is that I'm asking you not to vote on the budget. I'm asking you to table it again, because many of you know that on Thursday, myself and Mr. Teboom have a case in court, and we're suing the mayor, counsel, Mr. Griffin, Ms. Evans, Mr. Dow, and yourself, President Wiltshire. And we're asking that you hold this because it's all going to be brought up in court and let the judge decide whether or not the budget should be passed. Number two, we know you have until August to pass the budget, and we know that the budget can go on, because when I became an Alderman the first time, I voted to hold the budget up to about October, and we had supplemental budgets. Everybody got paid. So I don't want anybody to say that, what about our employees? They get paid. They're the ones who get paid. So there are some questions in the budget. I'm concerned about some things, but I want to say thank you. Although people say I'm a person that cuts a lot, that everybody was listening to the deferred capital improvements for the deferred maintenance in the school district, because I was a big advocate for that on the board, because every year you keep making sure that nothing gets fixed because you don't have the money. A little hole turns into a big hole, which costs a hundred bucks, and then all of a sudden it costs three thousand or a million dollars. But it's going into an account that they just can't get it in their line item. They have to ask for the money when they need the money. But that doesn't mean that we should put money back in the budget for other things. This is something that's important because we watch our schools deteriorate, and then we build new schools and we watch them deteriorate, because why? We do not do any repairs. You can't do that in your home. You have to fix whatever's broken. So that's number one. Number two.
One minute.
You know, we always have this surplus, and the surplus doesn't come back to us enough, we the taxpayers. And I'm reading some information that was sent around, and, you know, ever-source wants a forty-two percent increase. And yeah, we have the community electric, and that's all great, but everything keeps going up. And until we get this budget under control, it should be a zero-based budgeting. Not every year we build on top of every department what they have, that they want more. And the bottom line is that if you don't use it, you don't lose it, you spend it very quickly, so it doesn't come back to the taxpayers. So I'm tired of this, and I think it's about time we hold our feet to the fire and don't vote on the budget, please, tonight. Let us go through court. Thank you.
Laura Cahoon.
Laura Cahoon, thirty Greenwood Drive. I would like to go on the record to state that the Nashua taxpayers are not as ignorant as the mayor, Mayor Donches, and this board think we are. The process of property tax rate is very simple. The city submits both the current assessment on properties and the adopted budget to the DRA. With that information, the DRA comes up with the tax rate in order to make sure that the City of Nashua can cover all their expenses. Mayor Donches and this board cannot go back to the DRA for a do-over on the two thousand twenty-four tax rate. The DRA will just come up with a rate with the current expenses, which are up by seven point two nine and not the three point seven four the mayor is saying. This is reality. The budget is up approximately forty-five million dollars. Do the math. Please stop. Also, please, don't insult our intelligence by saying that the budget only went up the three point seven five. I know that mayor is delusional, and all the residents see that when the rate comes through, Mayor Donches, as usual, will blame the state. This is another lie, because the state only works with the figures the city gives. Mayor Donches, you are a compulsive spender, and the Board of Aldermen always let you get away. Nashua resident should look at the surplus or the unused budget balances, and they will note that since two thousand eighteen, it has gone up four hundred and forty-five percent, which is about fourteen million dollars. Close your mouth. Look at the figures. This is money that the mayor can spend on his pet projects after the budget is over. This would help the taxpayers if they were generous enough and care about the residents to apply it to the tax rate, but the mayor won't. Alderman Sullivan suggested a reduction in the school department of two point eight million. However, that was voted down by Alderman Kelly, Alderman Wiltshire, and Alderman Dow. Alderman Dow is a person that should not hold any position dealing with money. Residents must remember that because the school district overspent their S F funds by four point five, Dow made the taxpayers consume that error. So residents need to remember that when they can't put food on their table because of the high property taxes, they can blame the mayor and this board. Mayor will get the tax rate early in the fall, and he will not announce it until after the elections. Nashua residents need to start educating themselves about the deceptive practices of Mayor Donches and this board. Thank you.
Bill Ferrell.
My name is Bill Ferriero. My home is number thirty-five Indian Rock Road. So I looked at the mayor's proposed twenty-twenty-five budget, and I attended the public hearing, and I'm asking the Alderman to not vote on this budget tonight, to send it back to the mayor, to make his budget more accessible, more transparent, and more understandable. I also asked the Alderman to spend more time viewing this budget until they have an excellent understanding of it. I will explain. At the budget hearing, the mayor said that he wanted to improve accessibility and transparency of the budget and make it more understandable. But some of us spoke and told him that the top-level number, the very first number in the book, the most important number of all, didn't correlate with the rest of the book. The three point seven percent increase that was stated did not match the numbers in the book. The book showed a much higher increase. How is this possible? Why didn't every one of the Aldermen catch that and ask the mayor to fix that or give some explanation for it within the book? It's very simple math to compare one year's budget to another. You can do it on your phone. But when questioned about it at the budget hearing, the mayor explained that the actual twenty-twenty-four budget used in the increased calculation was not in the book. What was only shown in the resolution, and it was increased by about ten million because of supplemental authorizations that were added in twenty-twenty-four. How does burying that in the resolution make the budget more accessible, more transparent, more understandable? It doesn't. It does the exact opposite. It makes the information hidden, inaccessible, and vague and elusive. So whether you agree or not that the ten million dollars should be included in the increased calculation, you can then go to the resolution, find the backup data for it, and do the math. It's simple math, you can do it with your phone. I actually still don't calculate three point seven percent. I get three point eight four, but still, it's not transparent, it's not accessible. Are there some other numbers in the book that require us to go to some hidden piece of paper to find? So at the budget hearing, the Alderman presented a very clear image. One of the Aldermen was hollering at people who asked to speak more than once on a given portion of the budget. That makes the Alderman appear more interested in the process than the product. Another Alderman was on their phone when people were speaking. That makes the group seem interested in nothing the speakers have to offer. I felt bad for the people trying to participate in this process. I thought maybe they were checking the three point seven increase on their phone, but I kind of doubted. This is three hundred something million. You can't vote yes or no on it if you don't have excellent understanding of it, and I don't believe you do, because if you did, you would have found this issue. Please send it back, make it more transparent, understandable. Thank you.
That concludes our first public comment period. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award, Markham LLP.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to accept, place on file, and approve entering a two-year contract for external audit services with Markham LLP in the amount not to exceed two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Funding will be through Departments One, Two, Six Final Services, One, Six, Eight Solid Waste, and One, Six, Nine Wastewater Fund. One, Two, Six Financial Services, two hundred and two thousand, three hundred and twenty, One, Six, Eight Solid Waste, thirty thousand, nine hundred and ten, and One, Six, Nine Wastewater, forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A roll call, that's right.
Oh, that's right.
I retract my aye.
Would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien.
Oh, cheers. Thank you.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yea, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding tax increment finance development program, Park McDowell.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and approve a contract for construction administration services related to the Nashua Downtown Riverfront Implementation Project, Renaissance Park Pavilion, with Park McDowell in the amount of four thousand. Funding will be through Department One Eight Three Economic Development Fund, five three one zero seven Architect and Engineering Services, Los Riverfront Tiff Fund Bond.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. I'm sorry. It's gonna be a long night.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons. Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya. Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
14 yeas, 0 nays.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding tax increment finance development program, E.D. Sweat, Inc.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file and approve contract change number two for the downtown Nashua Riverfront Cotton Mill Transfer Bridge ADA project to address miscellaneous changes in the work related to contaminated soils and groundwater, crushed gravel backfill, tapered steel washers and replacement of an existing drain line in poor condition with Ed Sweat Incorporated in the amount of $22,405. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund 54210 Construction Service, Riverfront Tiff Fund Bond.
You've heard that motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
14 yeas, 0 nays.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award, Telview Corporation.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes, Madam President. Move to accept, place on file and award a multi-year contract for closed caption transcription with Telview Corporation in the amount of $25,266. Funding will be through the Department 124 PEG Access Channel Fund 81100 Capital Improvement.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
14 yeas, 0 nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award, Telview Corporation.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file and award a five-year contract for cloud services with Telview Corporation in the amount of $38,156.35. Funding will be through Department 124 PEG Access Channel Fund 81100 Capital Improvements.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
14 yeas, 0 nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award, Harbor Homes, Inc.
Alderman Timmons.
Okay, move to accept, place on file and approve a contract for the administration of Hopwatt Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS. Fast-Two Grant for Tenant-Based Rental Assistance with Harbor Homes, Inc. in the amount of $1,486,130. Funding will be through the Department 171 Community Services Fund 55699. Other contracted services, grant funds, housing opportunities for people with AIDS.
You've heard that motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
13 yeas, 1 nay.
And that motion carries. The following emergency PO request has been withdrawn. Without objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for communication needing approval that was not on the agenda.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding Amendment Four for Transit Contract Agreement in the amount of $687,720 plus variable costs funded from 55690 Regular Transportation Services.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to accept, place on file and approve Amendment Four for the compensation with First Transit in the amount of $687,720 plus variable cost funding will be, variable plus variable cost. Funding will be through Department 186 Transportation Fund 55690 Regular Transportation Services.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
14 yeas, 0 nays.
That motion carries. Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments and elections.
Joint convention with the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees, electing two trustees, Morgan Hollis and Andrew Armstrong.
There being no objection, I will accept the communication, place it on file and schedule a joint convention with the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees for Tuesday, July 9, 2024, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the May 7 and May 20th, 2024 Ad Hoc Capital Debt Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the reports of the May 16 and May 21st, 2024 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 20th, 2024 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 20th, 2024 Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of R-24-057 amended relative to the adoption of the fiscal year 2025 proposed budget for the city of Nashua General Enterprise Special Revenue and Grant Funds.
Alderman Kelly?
Do we need to do a suspension of the rules for an oral report from our Human Affairs Committee that happened before this? We are taking up a question number.
We are taking up a piece of legislation that was heard last night?
No. It's half hour ago.
Tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll allow for an oral report. Alderman Lopez.
I have just been elected to make an oral report.
Yeah.
So the Human Affairs Committee met immediately before this meeting. Our piece of business was focusing on the dental program and the Public Health Partnership for Outreach that is being built off of that. We heard from our public speaker tonight, a description of that program. It did pass the committee level with a recommendation for final passage unanimous.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Okay. Mr. Clark, could we go back to unfinished business resolutions, please?
Okay.
You're welcome.
Second reading of R-24-057 amended relative to the adoption of the fiscal year 2025 proposed budget for the city of Nashua General Enterprise Special Revenue and Grant Funds.
Alderman Dow.
I'd like to make a motion to amend R-24057 by replacing it with a Goldenrod copy of recommended amendments made by the Budget Review Committee with the following amendments to the following accounts. To increase capital improvement appropriations, line 81, page 246, education deferred maintenance by $400,000 to make the total of education deferred maintenance $500,000. To add $99,447 to line item 51900, salary adjustments, page 117. To reduce on page 54, economic development, line item description 55699, other contracted services, block party, trailer and existing and supporting new events by the amount of $20,000. And to add on page 41, Department Civic and Community Activities, GAD, line item description 56221, page 41, again, the amount of $20,000. And finally, to reduce, Department 111 Human Resources, page 66, line item 51100, salaries and wages in the amount of $31,650 for a part-time position by roll call. But before we do that, the changes to the budget were in addition of $467,797. On your Goldenrod copy, you'll see that the original general fund appropriation was changed from $340,338 to $340,770,935. And that amounted to being under the spending limit by $3,583,048.
You've heard the motion. Alderman Clea.
Yes, Madam President. I'm not sure if I'm doing this properly, but I would like to further amend. Okay. So to my colleague to the right who made an amendment to reduce line 55699 by $20,000, I would like to restore that $20,000 to line 55699 in keeping it, I just want to make sure I get the number correctly, in keeping it to the original number of $157,000 as proposed by the mayor. I'd also like to further reduce the school department bottom line by $500,000 from $182,240, I'm sorry, $240,036 to $181,740,36. This would take the proposed budget from the Goldenrod, I'm sorry, the mayor's proposed budget of, no, I guess the Goldenrod of $340,770, $70,935, reduce it by $480,000. And this would actually bring to 340,200, 340, 340 million, sorry, $290,935, which actually would put us $12,203 below the mayor's proposed budget.
Okay. Further discussion. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. I waited to make my remarks around the firefighter and a couple other things, but I urge my colleagues to support the firefighter money as it has come up.
It should be discussion on the Clea amendment.
Oh, sorry. You're right. Discussion is on the Clea amendment.
The further amendment is all I can talk about, or do?
My amendment, yeah.
Okay. So we'll talk about that then. I'll go backwards afterwards.
Okay.
Okay. I appreciate the sentiment of the block parties. I just feel that it's miscategorized. It doesn't feel like economic development to me and I would like to keep it as I proposed at the budget.
Anyone else? Alderman Clea.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate the sentiment of that and I had no issues with increasing the GAD budget by the $20,000 because I think that they do a lot of work for the city. And I think the current economic development department is kind of changing the face that we look at economic development and I think that's why this is a good program. It brings community. Some people may say this is a community development, but I don't agree with that. I think it's more of a economic development. In other words, that we're building better communities and it would give us a better leg up with people wanting to move into the city, people wanting to do a variety of things like that. So I think that $20,000 back into economic development is not going to hurt the budget. And as I said, by reducing the school department by 500,000 from their bottom line, we do come below 12,000, below the mayor's budget. And the truth is, with the original amendment of the 400,000, I think we're still into their capital improvement. I think we're still on par and I think these two amendments are really worthwhile. So thank you.
Anything further on the Clea amendment?
I just have a clarifying question.
Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. This doesn't take money away from GAD?
No.
Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
So I asked the school board multiple times to present us with a budget that they felt they could work with and I encouraged them that the Alderman would be supportive and would be listening to them. So I don't think I can support an amendment that's reducing their budget to such a significant amount. I do also recognize that if we cut the budget, then they're going to be left with trying to figure out what they'll be spending on, what they're not. So it's not like I can debate, okay, well, cut money for this specific school budget thing because we can't. I do appreciate the idea of the trailer. I do appreciate GAD. I like a lot of the stuff in the amendment, but I don't think I will support it.
Alderman Goveya?
Thank you, Madam President. My colleague from Ward 3, could you please go over it just one more time? Just want to make sure I understand it.
Sure, absolutely. What my proposal is, is to put the $20,000 back to line 5569, restoring the economic development back to $157,000 as proposed in the mayor's budget. I would further reduce the school department bottom line by $500,000. Currently, they have an $8.56 million increase. It would bring them from the proposed of $182,240,36 to $181,740,36. They would still have an increase from their previous year's budget of $8,600,000 plus. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. Through you to the maker of the motion, can you explain your reasoning or why you would like to do that?
Yes, I would be, yes, I would be happy to do that. There are many reasons. The truth is, I really did feel that the budget increase of well over 4% was probably in excess of what they needed. When I spoke at the budget hearing, there was a proposal of like cutting them by $2.8 million. I thought that was far excessive. Truth be told, I would probably like to cut them even more, but I don't want to blindside them. I think $500,000 is not in excess considering that they've already got an $8.56 million. I'm only cutting 500,000 from that. So they're still going to have the, the, most of the monies that they're going to want. Throughout the year, throughout this, before we got to this budget, they have laid off multiple teachers, they have increased some administrative staff, which some of them I absolutely agree with, but many I don't. I absolutely agree with, but many I don't. It was brought up to us about the ESAR funds and so on. We are putting four hundred thousand dollars into the capital improvement, which I think, you know, maybe eventually we need to start putting more into their capital improvement. It nets out to about a hundred thousand dollars less in their budget from getting that capital improvement to this. I don't think it's a hardship, and I think it's a good start to where we cannot tell them how to spend their money or where to spend their money. I think kind of affecting their bottom line is not a negative thing. Again, I would have liked to have gone more, but I think the five hundred thousand, half a million dollars is a good start.
Alderman Jettie.
So, so you're not changing Alderman Dowd's original amendment to add four hundred thousand to the school department with the hope that they use it for preventative means?
Alderman, please.
Uh, no, no, I'm not touching that. While we're not on that amendment, that amendment, that four hundred thousand dollars is into a capital improvement, which is completely different than the school budget. I just brought that up to say that they're getting four hundred over here, and I'm taking five hundred from their bottom line, their general fund, so to speak. It is really talking apples and oranges when I brought up that comparison, but no, I'm not touching that. The only thing that I would touch from the golden rod suggested amendments is the twenty thousand dollars, restoring that back. And then I'm doing an additional reduction of five hundred thousand dollars. Again, in total, I believe this brings us below, twelve thousand below the mayor's budget.
May I?
Alderman Jettie.
Okay, well, you know, I don't know about apples and oranges, but on the one hand, we're giving them an extra four hundred thousand, and then you're taking away five hundred thousand, so basically you're taking away a hundred thousand from their budget. So I, you know, I understand, I watched the budget meeting, I understand the comments and the sentiments expressed by some of the aldermen, you know, kind of frustration with the school department, and, you know, a desire to do something to reduce the overall budget. And, you know, I'm kind of tempted to go along with that, but as I think about it, you know, the thought kept coming back to me that if you're a fiscal conservative and you really want to reduce the city's budget, then you ought to run for the school committee, for the Board of Education, because, you know, like one bank robber said, why does he rob banks? And his answer was, because that's where the money is. Well, when you're talking about the school department budget, it's around fifty-five percent of the city's total budget. So if you want to reduce the city's total budget, and I'm not saying this to you personally, I'm just saying to anybody out there who wants to reduce the city's total budget, you know, get on the Board of Education, you know, go to the Board of Education's budget meetings, because that's where the money is. And, you know, we're, you know, as aldermen, we're kind of, you know, presented with a budget that the school department and the Board of Education, you know, have worked on. You know, they come to us with what they think is the best that they can do to provide, you know, the quality education that we expect. And, you know, as much as I'd like to, it, I don't think that it's our role, and I'm uncomfortable with our trying to micromanage the school department, you know, talking about whether they should have a certain, you know, whether they should have power professionals, whether they should have coaches, whether they should have certain teachers at certain departments. You know, if, you know, people who feel strongly about that, you know, ought to either, you know, run for the Board of Education or go to their meetings and try to influence what they do where it can be influenced. You know, at this level, you know, we have no, we have no ability to influence their budget except cut the bottom line. And, you know, cutting the bottom line sends a powerful message, but, you know, and it really bothers me when people say, you know, okay, well, if you cut the bottom line, you know, they're going to cut the programs that the people want. They're going to cut sports, they're going to cut music, they're going to cut choir, you know, things that people really value. Well, if they do, you know, shame on them. And the voters ought to pay attention to what's going on and, you know, choose your members of the Board of Education, you know, carefully and accordingly. But once it gets to this level, I'm reluctant, as much as I'm tempted to, I'm reluctant to cut their budget. I'm also reluctant to add to their budget. And when we talk about Alderman Dowd, I'll speak further about that.
I have three other people, so I'm going to let them speak. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, there's a narrative out there that the Board of Education produces a budget and it comes to the alderman for us to decide, and that's not true. The Board of Education approves a budget, crafts a budget, and it goes to the mayor. And the mayor decides what the mayor's going to do with it, and then it comes to the Board of Alderman, and then we have to decide whether we agree with the mayor or not. So this is the mayor's budget that we are working on. It's not the Board of Education's budget, although it might be similar, it's not the exact same thing. So I just wanted that on the record for everyone's knowledge.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, I just want a clarification from the maker of the motion. The memo from Director Hanum said that the trailer was fifteen thousand, but you made a motion for twenty thousand.
Madam President.
Alderman Cle.
Yes. I, the reason I made the motion for the twenty thousand was because that was taken from the department. If I had just made it for the fifteen thousand, it would have just, it would have been a five thousand dollar change. And I am happy to amend my motion to be fifteen thousand for the return of the economic development, and then I'm going to have to do math, so if you'll have to bear with me. I'm happy to, to, may I amend my motion, or is it too many? I can't, I can't amend my motion. There's already two motions, yes.
Yeah, we're two levels in, so.
No, no, I will leave it as is, and I thought there were just too many, so I'm going to leave it as is, is the twenty thousand to line five five six nine nine. I know there's others that need to speak, so.
Yes, so someone over here had their hand up. Was that you, Alderman Lopez? I thought so.
Yep.
Okay.
So having watched the Board of Education meetings and spoken to Superintendent Andre and President Bishop, it's my impression, and my impression, that it was stated that if the Board of Education left their budget the way that services were this year, because of the changes in ESAR funding and other funding, their actual budget as it was would have been somewhere around twelve percent, which they felt was way too much to even ask for. I believe it was also commented that what they felt would be fully viable would be seven percent. And again, they felt that that was too much to even ask the board for, when I said, well, we can't have the conversation about it if you don't ask. So I think to a previous speaker's point, there are fiscal conservatives on the Board of Education. They have been doing very careful management of resources, people. A number of teaching positions have been removed, and those staff members, it's my understanding, have moved to more administrative roles. And to the other, to the point being made, there is at least one person in the audience who is definitely trying, has been on the Board of Education, so I just want to acknowledge that there are people that are out there trying to do that and to go where the money is. But I think where the money is, is here, right now. We're the ones who are deciding, you know, what they're going to have to work with. And I think they have done their due diligence and their efforts to try to reduce the budget as much as they can, and this is the budget they say they need. Five hundred thousand dollars is not an easy-to-absorb amount, that's around eight or nine teachers. And I think when we're having conversations about maybe closing schools or, you know, trying to trim the fat in certain areas in certain ways, where many of us on this board have advocated that we want to focus on the needs of the students first, and we want to make sure that our school district is funded to the point where it can at least do its job, and we might have the possibility of seeing improved results. I don't think that's going to start by, like, taking five hundred thousand dollars without any particular conversation with the Board of Education or any, you know, ideas of what they would do. At least right now, their budget is outlined, the amounts that are presented correspond to actual intentions and plans on their side. I don't know what it'd look like if we take five hundred thousand dollars off at the end, and I don't think it'll be consistent at all with at least the presentation that I've had, that the Board of Aldermen is very supportive of the Board of Education, that we take our students seriously, and that we do want to make sure that our public schools and the resources that we have as a city are in sync, and they're offering a very necessary service to our community. I don't think we're going to be number one in the country for any of our factors if our schools continue to decline or struggle. And I think if we were going to make any cuts like this, it should be a thought-out and reasoned, specific approach, not lumped in with other things.
Alderman Dowd.
I just want to clarify something. The deferred maintenance monies that we increased as part of the capital improvements part of the budget is on page eighty-one.
Sorry.
It's not part of the school board budget per se, and so they cannot use it for anything except deferred maintenance. Comes from a completely different part of the budget. It's not in the school department. And having worked with the school department long enough, I know that they would not touch this because they need to be able to maintain these buildings. And even with the amount that we made to five hundred thousand, that's still not the request that was made for deferred maintenance, it was a million three. Three hundred thousand of that's going to be for a study to determine what is needed in all the buildings over time, just like the fire department did, but.
It's not part of a plea motion.
It's not part of my motion.
Now, clarifying, something came up in the discussion.
Okay, let's try to stick to the plea motion. Anything further on the Alderman Cle?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I, I won't hide the fact that, as I said, I believe that their budget should be cut even more. They, I don't believe that they will miss this five hundred thousand dollars. In the past, some of the monies that they've used are towards some of the fixes and so on that they've had to do within the school department. We are putting other monies aside, and I'm not going to discuss that. I think five hundred thousand dollars from their budget is technically so little, I don't think that they would see that. And I know, I guess, part of my ire is the comments that have been made and that my colleague to the left kind of brought up, that if we touch a penny or we cut anything from the school department, we're going to have parents calling us because the school board is going to tell them to call. I don't, I hope that that would never happen, and that they will cut programs like music and arts and sports, and let's be honest, they're not going to touch the big sports, and so on. Again, I would hope they wouldn't, they wouldn't do that. They keep talking about these paradigm shifts. When I look at the monies that they have had unused in the past, whether we want to call those, you know, the excess monies and so on that have been brought up, it's been like over two million dollars, and I think that was brought up at the Budget Committee meeting, that they basically don't spend almost two million dollars every year for the multiple years. So I don't think that they're going to miss this five hundred thousand dollars. And I really do think that we should restore the monies back to economic development. I know that it was brought up that they said that they needed fifteen thousand for that, but I have talked to Director Hanum, and they are doing some exciting programs and so on. I think that extra five thousand over the fifteen thousand will be well-used. So I do hope that you will support this amendment. I do have some problems with the budget. I think these small changes bring us below the mayor's budget by almost nothing. I know twelve thousand dollars, again, when you look at three hundred and forty thousand dollars is actually nothing. But I think, think about that they have, year after year, had excess funds. Five hundred thousand dollars out of the two million that they seem to have year after year is not going to affect any programs. Yes, we'll probably get threats, we'll probably, and I mean that in a pleasant way, meaning you shouldn't have done that and so on, but I don't think five hundred thousand is a lot to ask, and I hope that you will all support me in this. So, thank you.
Anything further on the plea amendment? Alderman Clemmons. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Moran?
Yes, I'd like to move the question.
The clerk call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Cle.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve VAs, two NAs.
That motion carries. The plea amendment is what we're voting on? Would the clerk call the roll? Let me, plea amendment, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Timmons.
No.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Senate.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Wiltshire.
No.
Five VAs, nine NAs.
And that motion fails. So we're back to the original motion, the golden rod copy. Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I, the Budget Committee spent a lot of time on trying to hone in on a final number, and we didn't add a significant amount. I mean, yes, that number's a significant amount of money, but it's like point zero zero one on the budget rate. So, and I understand we might have to come to some kind of compromise if we're going to get ten votes, because any change to any line item on the budget requires that we get ten votes. So, the golden rod copy, I've explained what the changes are. Isn't that correct?
What he's saying is, it's only.
All man increase. Right. So the golden rod copy does have some lines increased.
Yes.
So, back to the ten votes. So it may require compromise. I don't think anyone, or the majority of the board's not going to go for severe cuts to education or potentially other departments, but we're in this position now, we're at the golden rod copy with the amendments, so let's see what people think.
This is an amend, which only requires a majority.
Right.
Then final passage will require ten, if this amend passes.
Correct. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to make a motion to further amend by adding the twenty thousand dollars back for the into economic development for the block party trailer and existing and supporting new events.
Point of order? That's already in the order, and you don't have to add it back.
No, he does.
His motion failed.
My motion failed. He has to.
You made a motion add it. Oh, back, that's right. It was added, added. No, I'm sorry, you're right. You're right.
Discussion on that motion? Motion by Alderman Clemmons is to add twenty thousand dollars back to economic development. Seeing no further discussion on that, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran. Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie. Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Five yeas, nine yeas, five nays.
And that motion passes. Okay, we are now back at the golden rod copy with an addition of twenty thousand dollars for the Economic Development Department. Alderman Jettie.
Okay, I'm sorry, are we back to the, the original, the golden rod copy?
With the addition of the twenty thousand we just voted on.
Okay. So I have a question through you to Corporation Council.
Yes.
So, during the, you know, tonight and, and at last, the Budget Review Committee, the last Budget Review Committee meeting, you know, Alderman Dowd talked about the, this four hundred thousand, adding it to the capital impro- improvements part of the budget. And, yeah, he was very clear that the school department, I think, I think what he said is the school department, you know, would have to spend that money on deferred maintenance, and it would be under the control of Sean Smith, not the school superintendent or the school board. Can you, is that true? If we give them this four hundred thousand, as Alderman Dowd has proposed, they have to spend it on, on deferred maintenance, and it's under the purview of Mr. Smith, not the rest of the administration?
Well, yes, it has to be spent on deferred maintenance. No, it's not true that Sean Smith has any more right over this money than any other employee in the school department has over any money. The Nashua School District has control and is administered by the superintendent and the Board of Education, but they cannot transfer this money to some other account in their budget.
Okay, thank you.
The Alderman, you, this board, can transfer that money elsewhere until such time as money's been spent out of it and there's no more money left to transfer. But this board is the one that can make transfers from what's available.
Okay, thank you. May I continue?
Alderman Jettie.
So that, that makes me more comfortable about it. But I looked at the capital improvements program, and, you know, Alderman Dowd is on the Capital Improvements Program Committee this year. I was on it last term, and, you know, for the, forgive me if I'm saying something that you already know, but the Capital Improvements Program, you know, hears from all the various departments about what kind of capital improvements they feel they need. And, you know, they, they talk about what the projects are, how much they're going to cost, how much money they want, how much money they need for that, and, and the reasons for it. And the Capital Improvements Committee rates all of these projects. So, you know, this is part of the planning process, and they make a recommendation to the mayor about, you know, which project should be funded and, you know, which are critical and which are not. So they, they rate things, you know, A, B, and C, and there's, you know, long-term and short-term. And A is essential, B is desirable, you know, C is, I can't, I forget what it means, commendable or, you know, something that, that could be done if they have the, the money. But the top rating is A, and, and the B rating is below A. And the, the capital improvements that, that this money would go to, you know, are listed in the capital improvements projects, and they all received a B rating, not an A rating. So I feel that, you know, by, and I know how passionate Alderman Dowd is about deferred maintenance, and he makes a good argument, you know, for the fact that, you know, that we haven't put enough money aside for deferred maintenance. But, you know, we're taking something, you know, we're, we're ignoring the recommendations of the, you know, the Capital Improvements Committee, you know, which is, you know, their recommendations are approved by the Planning Board, you know, the planning departments involved. And we're saying, you know, we're, we're going to push this ahead of, of the other things that you may have rated higher. And so I'm uncomfortable with that part of it, and so that's why I cannot, I cannot support this.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. In regards to what the previous speaker said, I, I'm, I'm not going to make a decision based on the fact that there's a process that I, that I don't agree with. The fact of the matter is, is that the elected boards, so in other words, the Board of Alderman, Board of Education, the Board of Public Works, those boards have the authority to decide what, ultimately what projects get funded. The, and, and to a lesser extent, the, the administrators in those departments decide what they're going to propose to those boards as what they want. Yes, we have a Capital Improvement Committee that helps guide those decisions, but it's not in stone, and it shouldn't be in stone. The, we are the people who are elected. We are the people who represent taxpayers. We should have the final say. So while I appreciate the sentiment, are we going to cut all of the deferred maintenance because we don't agree with, with the capital improvement plan? So we're just going to cut all the, all that until we get that sorted out? I mean, I think that's, it's a little bit of a ridiculous argument, in my opinion. And so while I appreciate the sentiment, I, I do not agree with that line of thinking, and I, it bothers me.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, the Capital Improvements Committee ranks a number of things, and as anybody goes to the ad hoc committee knows, that there are a lot of important things that we have to fund. But that book goes to the mayor. The mayor picks out things that he wants to fund within the budget for capital improvement. They already had a hundred thousand in the mayor's budget for deferred maintenance, which I think everybody that I've talked to thinks that's nowhere near enough for a billion dollars worth of infrastructure. And if we don't take care of it, we're going to be spending ten times that amount downstream. There are things that need to be done right now to get fixed, and that's what that money will be for. The larger projects don't go into the budget as, as per se, as we're talking about tonight. Most of the projects are very large and they're bonded, which we have to approve. So we have made a decision, the Capital Improvements Committee, that we're going to revamp the Capital Improvements Committee to make it more in line with the mayor and the Board of Alderman. I know the Planning Board's still involved, but to make it A projects, projects that need to be funded this fiscal year. That has never happened. And that's why in that process, I'm not going to say it's broke. I'm going to say it needs tweaking, and we are actually going to be having a meeting very shortly with the Capital Improvements Committee to work on the new procedure. So I wouldn't say that we're, you know, doing anything against capital improvements. They, they certainly understand the importance of deferred maintenance, because I was at all those meetings, and, and, and that's why the mayor put a hundred thousand in, but it's not enough. We, if we want to, if we don't want to be in a position where we're spending millions of dollars to renovate schools because they've fallen apart, because we haven't taken care of them, I don't think that's physically responsible. Manchester's in a, in a situation where they're going to be spending nine hundred million dollars to fix their schools because they haven't taken care of them. There's a number of reasons behind that. Now, but right now, just the short-term fix is three hundred million. I mean, you know, we're in a, we've taken fairly good care of our schools, but things keep getting deferred. One of the items that, that's going to be covered, I'm not sure if it's this year's funds or next year's funds, is the auditoriums in the high schools still have incandescent light bulbs in, in there, and they can't even buy them anymore. So they have to change into LEDs. Where are they going to get that money? It's out of deferred maintenance. So we need to give them at least a decent amount of deferred maintenance actions to keep our school buildings in the condition they need to be kept in. But it's not a conflict between the CIP and the budget. Totally different, unrelated at this point. Yes, the mayor gets a copy of that thing, and he picks out what he wants in deferred maintenance, but if you look in page eighty-one of the budget book and look at the deferred maintenance, you'd see that doesn't even come close to what was recommended by capital improvements.
Alderman Jettie.
So, thank you for that explanation. So, so help me understand the, this preventive deferred maintenance by the school department. Is, is there anything preventing the school department from using part of their money to put into deferred maintenance to pay for these things like light bulbs that you're talking about, or, you know, other improvements, and other repairs and maintenance that they need? What, why, why doesn't the school department provide for that in their budget? Why, why is it necessary for you to ask us for an extra four hundred thousand? Why don't they just do that?
Alderman Dowd.
They have, they have entire maintenance departments run by Sean Smith, and they do take care of normal, small things, changing light bulbs, filters, that kind of stuff. But if you get into a major expense, it, it, the school department doesn't have the money to say, okay, instead of hiring a couple teachers, we're going to give you deferred maintenance money to do, you know, patch the holes in the con, in the, in the asphalt at Nashua High North, which the whole road needs to be fixed, or any, there's a whole list of projects. I mean, I could probably look them up and tell you what they are, but it, it's, it's things that need to be done, short-term, and they need the money. They don't have it in their budget to cover those kinds of major expenses. And it's, it's, it's the, it's the catch between normal, everyday maintenance of light bulb here or fixing something here, and, and like the one year, if you recall, we had a hundred thousand deferred maintenance, and remember, we took the tour and I showed you the pump. It was ninety thousand dollars at the high school. It deferred maintenance out the window. So since then, we've tried to add more to the deferred maintenance. But if it's really large projects, then it has to come back here and get bonded. But some of the things that we end up bonding are things that weren't taken care of properly. When we tore down the old high school to put up Nashua High School South, there were a bunch of air handlers that were totally rusted shut, useless. So you've got a billion dollars' worth of buildings, and, and this is not even close to the amount they should have to do the major projects they need to do.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, to, to directly answer the question that was asked, I believe, and Alderman Dowd had said it before, that one, the school department asked for one point three million dollars in deferred maintenance, and the mayor cut it to a hundred thousand dollars. So you asked the question, why didn't they put it in their budget? They did. The mayor cut it. What we're trying to do here is put some of it back.
Alderman Lopez.
To add to the previous speaker's point, in the review committee, the question was asked the superintendent, like, what else would you add? Would you have us put in there that wasn't in there? And I was expecting more paraprofessionals, I was expecting LL teachers. He said deferred maintenance.
Further discussion? Okay, so the motion before us is to...
It's an amend to a golden rod copy with the other changes that Alderman Dowd said.
So the golden, the motion before us is to amend with the golden rod copy plus the twenty thousand dollars that was added back for economic development. So that's the amendment. Seeing no further discussion on the amendment, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
No.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Klee. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Five, nine yeas, five nays.
That motion carries. Motion before us now is for final passage as amended.
I don't think anyone's made that motion yet.
Oh, no one's made that motion. Okay.
Should be.
Alderman Clemmons.
So moved.
Okay. The motion is for final passage as amended. Further discussion on that? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Klee. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Ten yeas, four nays.
That motion passes. Resolution twenty-four fifty-seven is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of R-24-060 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of three hundred and sixty thousand from Delta Dental into Public Health and Community Services Grand Activity Smiles for Tomorrow.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend final passage of R-24060. I roll call.
Recommend.
No, not recommend.
Sorry. I'd like to make a motion for final pass, still in the last meeting. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24060. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24060.
Motion is for final passage, discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 2460 is declared duly adopted. Without objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for an oral and second reading
Second reading.
Okay.
Second reading of R-24-061, authorizing the city of Nashua to enter into contracts the South Eagan Valley Transportation Collaborative, Nashville Community College, Riviera University, Town of Hudson, and Town of Merrimack for transit services.
Alderman Dow.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24061 by roll call and brief statement.
Alderman Dow.
This was approved by the Budget Committee at the last budget meeting.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 2461 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-24-017, permitting certain funding transfers within the Public Works Division.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of O-24017 by roll call.
Further motion, discussion on that motion. Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise today in opposition of the, of the legislation before us for a few reasons. And I think it's kind of funny, the mayor actually brought up one of my, one of my points here. If you build it, they will come. And right as we do this for one division, every division's going to want this. I talked to two directors today who told me they would be first and second in line to get this done, to have legislation enabling them to do just about the same thing. I just don't feel this is the smartest thing we could do. After everything we've been through with the schools now, to start rolling back transparency and overlook for certain departments that get special treatment over processes that other departments have to follow, it, it just doesn't, it doesn't sit well with me. To roll up these budgets and basically have a DPW budget that will be a bottom-line number and the rest of the line items not mean anything because you could move X to Y and Y to Z and just keep moving it around. Eventually, we're going to have to have a court board with some string trying to track where all this money's going from certain accounts. And that's just, I don't know, what, the process we have now works. We, we just did one for DPW that involved one of the rotaries in Ward 1. They said, "Yeah, we're going to reappropriate." They submitted the legislation, it went through the legislative process, and it got done. I, I don't see an issue with what we're doing. I like the transparency and the oversight from this board into anything that has to do with big money transfers or any transfers in general. So, for that reason, I'm going to be opposed to the legislation before us, and I would urge my colleagues to follow.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I actually talked to my colleague from, from Ward 1 about this, and I had originally sponsored this. And it, what, what he had to say makes sense. And I think that we, I think we could do this with some limitations, right? Because we don't want to, do we really want to have a full board discussion about moving $1,000 from one place to another? I mean, there has to be some give and take on this, I think. And I think we can find a right amount. So, I'm not going to make the motion, but, and it's, this might be worth discussing further in, in the committee.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I respect and can't completely disagree with the two speakers before me. I understand that. But unlike other departments, the one thing that this department has, much alike the school department, is an elected board. And one of the problems being on Finance Committee that I can, I do see quite often is that there is a delay of getting something to finance and, because it has to go through their, their Board of Public Works. And one of the issues that we saw when there was a constant change in prices of vehicles, and not that this, this would not fall within that category, is that there was such a delay by the time we got it, the price had increased, and then sometimes it was significant increase that made us gasp, and we were trying to figure out, is there a different way we can do it? Can it come to both boards at the same time? And that wasn't practical either. So, I do believe that this is not just going to be where we're pointing things and so on, and... But I do believe that where they have a, a, an elected board that, that has to oversee all of this and it would still have to go through their approval process, I think it's slightly different than any of the other departments. And of course, any department would, would want something to that, that nature. Now, I do respect both of my colleagues' comments, especially maybe a limitation and so on. I truthfully would not have an idea at this point as to, to what the limitation would be. So, I too would not feel comfortable making a, a motion to it. But I, I do think that this is different because they do have an elected board. So, they are responsible to the public for transparency and so on. I think doing a delay of having to get them to come to the, the Finance Committee for some kind of transfer of some sort like that would be, it, it's just going to take the, that extra time away. So, for that, for that reason, I am going to support this as written.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So, this, this resolution or this ordinance was, was put forth last year and came before the Budget Review Committee last year. And I was on the Budget Review Committee at, at the time. And, you know, so I, I voiced my concerns about it. You know, my, my major concern is that, you know, I gave the example of, you know, and Alderman, you know, finding something in his ward that needs, that needs work. Let's, let's say it's a, you know, a particular, you know, a street that has, you know, need of, of immediate attention. And, and he convinces the rest of his colleagues, or a majority of his colleagues, that this is something that needs to get done. So, we appropriate money to do that. And then, if this passes, the Board of Public Works, the Director of Public Works, you know, could, you know, could decide that some other project has a priority over that. And she, and, you know, is able to convince the mayor and the, and the, the tax collector treasurer or the CFO, whoever it is, you know, that, you know, she convinces them that this is, this is, you know, that they agree that this has a, a priority. So, this change of, of money, you know, could have, could happen without the Board of Ald, the Board of Alderman having oversight over it. It could be directly opposite of what the Board of Alderman wants to do. So, you know, I, I, I expressed that concern. I also, you know, talked about how the wording, you know, I, I think during that discussion, you know, CFO said, "Well..." And the, the finance person from Public Works was also present at the meeting. And, and they said, "Well, you know, this would only be, you know, transfers of general fund operating accounts." And I said, "Well, it doesn't say that." And they said, "Yes, you're, you're right." And CFO Griffin suggested that it be amended to read general fund operating accounts. And he said, "Yeah, that would be better." So, we made that amendment last year in the Budget Review Committee. And then, the other, the other question I raised is, you know, what's been brought up by my colleagues, and that is, you know, you know, there's no limit here. They kept talking about how this would just be small amounts. And I said, "Well, it doesn't say that. There's, there's no number here." And, and I said, "You know, is there a number that you would be comfortable with?" Speaking to CFO Griffin and, and the, the finance person from the Public Works, you know, is there a number that we could put in here? We could amend it to limit it to that number? And they said, "Well, you know, we're not comfortable doing that tonight, but we'll, we'll come back to you." So, so it was tabled, and this was in July of last year. It was tabled with the idea that we're going to come back with a number. So, this proposed ordinance, you know, was amended to read general fund operating accounts. And then, we were waiting for them to come back with a, a number of limitation, as has been expressed tonight. And they never came back. And the ordinance just failed because it never came off, it was tabled and never came off the table. So, it was tabled in July, they had until December to, to come up with something, they never did. So, now it's come back, you know, without the amendment that we made last year and still without the dollar limit. And, so, I, I can't support this. I just, I, for the reasons I've stated.
Okay, Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. In keeping with, just trying to advance the conversation, I thought about this a lot. I can't, I can't support it for, for one reason, you know, for the reasons that were given. But, but one thing I think about is what happens beyond 2024. I think when you look at this ordinance as it stands and you apply it to the current state of DPW, we know like and trust Director Photo, but I look beyond it. We don't know the next DPW director, we don't know that department, we don't know any of it. I just don't think that this ordinance endures beyond that. So, for that reason, I'm going to vote against it.
Alderman Dow.
Yeah, originally, I had the same concerns that had been voiced. And then, had further discussions with Director Photo and others of her division director, or department heads. And two things. One, they do a number of, of projects where several of their groups are involved. And, and so, it's, it's, they interact a lot. You know, if they go out and do a road project, they have several people, several of their groups involved. The other thing is, some of their work is weather-dependent, you know. One year, they may not have a lot of snow removal and may have a, a great spring summer like this year where they need to take care of ovals and other things that they did, and they need extra money for. I don't see any other division in the city that's similar. Police moves money around. They have a police commissioners. The fire department moves money around, they have a fire commission. But who else? I mean, I don't think people in the planning department are moving things between zoning and inspections and stuff. So, I was convinced to support this, and I think I will. But they do have the DPW, Department of Public, I mean...
BPW.
Board of Public Works. And the chair happens to be here this evening, and I'm just curious as to what he thinks about this.
Well, that happens to be me, if you don't know the city chair. Well, the case they make is, just as Alderman Dow said, that, you know, the Parks Department plows the streets and vice versa. Not always, but often, they're working on the same projects across the departments. I don't think it's their intention, although maybe this theoretically could be the effect. I don't think it's their intention, as Alderman Govea suggested, that, you know, this would just become a bottom-line budget with no controls and they'd just be moving around money all the time. I mean, I, maybe it would authorize that. So, a modification seems like it's in order to allay those concerns. I mean, the idea, if you want, you know, the idea of putting in a number, I think, makes sense. And then, you know they're not switching, you know, $100,000. We could, I could talk with the director and come up with a number. We do have $25,000 in terms of the Finance Committee threshold. I don't know if that would be the number or not, but we could propose a, a ceiling.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, in regards to the previous speaker, I, I think it would be prudent to, to find out, you know, whether or not, and, and I think it warrants further discussion of whether or not it's a, it's an overall cap. In other words, it's for fiscal year, whatever, 25, it's, it's $25,000, it's $50,000 total. And whatever you move around, you move around underneath that. And once it gets, once you've moved $50,000 worth, then it triggers to come back into the normal process. Or if it's more capped on the actual transfer itself. And I think that's where the discussion should head. And so, for those reasons, I'm going to make a motion to refer back to the Budget Committee.
Motion is to re-refer.
Madam President?
One moment, one moment, please. Alderman Lopez, how do you stand up first?
Yeah, I don't know if Alderman Moran and I are having the same thought, but to the maker of the motion, would it make sense to also refer to the Board of Public Works so they can all consult?
Sure.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. This legislation, as amended, I would definitely support. I think last term, I made a similar legislation, and that was a legislation that died in budget. I thought there would be a number, and I think having a number would be the best bet to go. So, I'm looking forward to supporting this amendment.
Anything further? Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I think that's fair. I, I think that's a good compromise to come up with a ceiling number. I think that's something we can get on. I kind of like the idea of the, the finance number, but we'll see. I think we can have some more discussions about that in the future.
Okay, motion is to re-refer. Would the clerk, clerk, please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries and Ordinance 2417 is re-referred to the Budget And ordinance 2417 is re-referred to the Budget Review Committee and the Board of Public Works. Business unfinished at the previous meeting. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to remove from the table R-24-033 by roll call.
Motion is to remove R-2433 from the table. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Moran. Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
12 yeas, 1 nay.
That motion carries.
Fourth reading of R-24-033, proposing an amendment to the City Charter relative to adding two additional members to the Board of Health.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24-033 by roll call. And I would like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. While I appreciate the member of the publics who happens to sit on the Board of Health's comments and written statements that were provided to the Board tonight, there was ample opportunity to have this discussion in public, transparent committee meetings, which the Board of Health members did not attend. And I believe at this point, it's just a stall tactic. And I would like to move forward and urge the members of the Board to vote yes.
Further discussion? Motion is for final passage. Say no one? Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Timmons.
No.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
No.
10 yeas, 4 nays.
That motion carries. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-24-063, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $500,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs Invest New Hampshire Demolition Grant Program, and approval for the city to grant said funds to Blaylock Holdings LLC for demolition of the Mohawk Tannery site through a grant agreement.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Timmons. Alderman Lopez. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Senate. Alderman Klee. Alderman Dowd, and myself. And Alderman Moran. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, July 22, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. New business ordinances.
First reading of O-24-021, updating the insurance and risk management ordinances.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Timmons. Alderman Dowd, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Oh, sorry, Alderman O'Brien.
First reading of O-24-022, amending the zoning map by rezoning land situated south of Burke Street and east of Ingalls Street, north of Salmon Brook, and west of a line running north and south perpendicular to Burke Street, which is 450.220 feet easterly of the intersection of Major Drive and Burke Street from C Urban Residence RC to C Urban Residence with Mixus, Earl A. District, RC/MU.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Moran. Alderman Klee. Alderman Dowd.
And Alderman O'Brien.
And myself.
Oh, and Alderman O'Brien, thank you. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and Planning Board, with a public hearing conducted by Planning and Economic Development scheduled on Tuesday, July 16, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of O-24-023, prohibiting electronic participation in meetings if the person is participating from outside of the United States.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Period to general public comment. We have six speakers signed up.
Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. I have concerns about Nashua Pride, which was celebrated this past Saturday. It wasn't all rainbows and unicorns. The mayor rejected my request to fly the pine tree flag for the 249th anniversary of the Battle of Bunker Hill, where our brave soldiers fought and died. Instead, on June 17, our state flag was removed and replaced with the Progress Pride flag. This is embarrassing for the city. What happens next year on the 250th anniversary? For the second time that I'm aware of, Nashua Pride had a topless woman participating. A few years ago, a woman marched topless in the parade. This year, a woman performed on the stage in the Nashua Library Plaza, wearing nothing but belts over her breasts. What prevented a wardrobe malfunction? Not much from what I saw. This is burlesque entertainment for adults and not at all appropriate for children. Nashua Pride celebrates the rights of men like former Representative Stacey Lawton to be in women's spaces in sports. Stacey Lawton was charged with sexual exploitation of children. He's accused of having pictures of naked local toddlers on his phone and exchanging messages with his partner about raping those toddlers. This is not unexpected behavior for men who have a sexual fetish for dressing like women. Women and children deserve safety and privacy from men like this. Their sexual fetishes should not be celebrated. Equally horrifically, we recently learned that a detransitioner who suffered from autism and severe mental health conditions has filed a lawsuit against St. Joseph's Hospital, where her uterus and ovaries were removed. She also had a double mastectomy, and her vagina was sewn shut. Dartmouth Health Endocrinologist and Professor of the Dartmouth School of Medicine, Dr. John Turco, is accused of convincing her that a medical transition to make her appear male would help her with her mental health problems. Instead, she discovered that the treatments caused her serious mental and physical harm. This is barbaric. And Nashua Pride celebrates this barbaric so-called gender-affirming care for children and vulnerable adults. When will our elected officials and leaders in our community wake up and realize the harm to women and children by transgender ideology? When will you stop celebrating it and join us in speaking up in defense of the victims?
Hello again, Board. My name is Nicholas Sclera, two pangs in place here in Nashua. And I'm here once again to compel you as a Board to write, pass, and endorse a resolution calling for an immediate and lasting ceasefire in Gaza. After last meeting, I submitted an application to the city to raise the Palestinian flag on what would be today, because today is Anti-Apartheid Day. Commemorating the beginning of the anti-apartheid movement against South Africa in the 1960s, Anti-Apartheid Day is a shining example of international solidarity against the forces of oppression, destruction, and fascism. However, the City of Nashua, after not giving me an answer for 10 days, denied the application yesterday, the 24th. In that denial letter, it was stated that the Palestinian flag, in quotes, "is not in harmony with the message that the city wishes to express and endorse." I wonder what the Palestinian flag is not in harmony with the city's ideals? To me, this message signals that the City of Nashua is not as welcoming as we all say it is. In your words, Mr. Mayor, when you raised the Ukrainian flag in March of 2022, after Russia's imperial invasion, quote, "We hope this small show of support will comfort local Ukrainians and foster hope for peace and freedom in their homeland." Do not wish the same for your fellow Nashuans, who have come up here and told you stories about the horrendous and inhumane treatment that they felt in their homeland of Palestine. Are they worth less to you than the Ukrainian residents in your city? Nashua is nicknamed the Gate City, in part due to its proximity to our border with Massachusetts. But furthermore, we are supposed to be an open and hospitable welcome in our live-free-or-die state. You have locked that gate to our Palestinian neighbors. That gate is no longer open and welcoming. You, as a city and Board, have been nothing but adversarial to both us as a group of concerned citizens, as well as the Palestinian population themselves here in Nashua. Nashua has raised the flag of Ukraine, as I previously mentioned, as well as the Armenian and Kurdish flags, to name a few. The Armenian flag was raised in front of City Hall in 2022 in remembrance of the 107th anniversary of the Armenian genocide. The flag of Kurdistan was raised in 2019. I bring these up for a reason. It is not to prove to you all, it is to prove to you all that you don't have an issue with the topics being discussed, but only when it comes to Palestine. Multiple international law scholars, Holocaust scholars, and humanitarian rights orgs have correctly determined what is going on in Gaza, a genocide, just like what happened in Armenia in 1915. While the United States does not recognize either Kurdish or Palestinian statehood, over 100 nations recognize Palestinian independence, while the US and 30 other nations have diplomatic ties to Kurdistan. I ask you, Board, what is inherently different between the Palestinian flag and Anti-Apartheid Day, and the Armenian flag and Armenian genocide, the Kurdistan flag and Kurdish statehood, or the Ukrainian flag and Ukrainian independence from aggression? Again, Mr. Mayor, the same woman who I referenced in my comments last meeting is once again spewing hateful and racist restages. Last, this week, with a picture of a wounded Palestinian man, but still alive, tied to the top of an Israeli military vehicle, she wrote in response, quote, "The vehicle was likely full, and he asked to hitch a ride. They often put five people on a motorbike in hundreds hanging off cars." Alderman Dowd, as my Alderman, will you support me against this hateful woman? She has supported you and endorsed you for your office, as well as the mayor.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Betsy Gamrat. I live at 10 Wood Street. I'm asking you to address heat advisories, watches, and warnings issued by the federal government as the climate emergencies they are symptoms of. One of the most significant contributors to urban temperatures is motor vehicle traffic. I'm requesting that when any heat advisory, watch, or warning is issued, all nonessential driving be prohibited in Nashua. Main Street be closed to all but emergency vehicles, and urgent errands such as picking up prescriptions at wing gates, drive-throughs, and car washes must be closed. These are reasonable restrictions to reduce the size of the urban heat island as well as the climate. This will also make dining on Main Street much more pleasant and speed access for emergency vehicles to our hospitals. Inaction in the face of climate change implies it's not significant. We need to change the way we live in order to survive. Residents will not alter their habits unless they have to. And local government has the power to change the world for the benefit of all. Thank you.
Paula Johnson, I don't see is here any longer. Laura Cohoon, I don't believe is here any longer.
Thank you for having me. Bradley Conway from Manchester. I'm not here to punish you with sad feelings today. I'm here to open your eyes, hopefully, to something catastrophic that's really actually happening right now. Today, Al Jazeera reported that no aid has entered Gaza in approximately 50 days. Last week, Al Jazeera reported that 50,000 Gaza children are in urgent need of medical attention to address the malnutrition caused by Israel's illegal siege. A new report published by UNICEF this week reports that an average of 10 children in Gaza lose one or both legs each day. The report was just about the legs. And the US keeps exporting weapons to make it happen. Just like last week, Congress approved an additional $16 billion in sales of fighter jets to Israel. So exports of US arms to foreign militaries are regulated by US federal law under the Arms Export Control Act. The Leahy laws are amendments to the Arms Export Control Act, which prevent, quote, "assistance to any unit of the security forces of a foreign country if the Secretary of State has credible information that such a unit has committed a gross violation of human rights." Of course, we've been coming to tell you about Israel's violations of international months, or law for months now. But for years, Israel has been the exception to both international and US federal law, because US institutions have failed to hold Israel to account. The US State Department is tasked with enforcing the Leahy laws, but to date, has somehow found no credible evidence of gross violations of human rights. This finding by the US State Department is refuted directly by an investigation that was published a couple of weeks ago, on June 12, by a UN Independent International Commission of Inquiry. And when the report was published, this commission did a press conference, which I'll be now reading excerpts from, quote, "In relation to Israeli military operations and attacks in Gaza, the commission found that Israeli authorities are responsible for war crimes and starvation as a method of warfare, murder or willful killing, intentionally directing attacks against civilians and civilian objects, forcible transfer, sexual violence, torture, and inhumane cruel treatment, arbitrary detention, and outrages against personal dignity." The report found that statements made by Israeli officials amounted to the crime of incitement. Direct and public incitement of genocide is a crime under international law when perpetrated. The report found that immense numbers of civilian casualties in Gaza and widespread destruction of civilian objects and infrastructure were the inevitable result of a strategy undertaken with the intent to cause maximum damage disregarding the principles of distinction, proportionality, and adequate precautions. The intentional use of heavy weapons with large destructive capacity in densely populated areas constitutes an intentional and direct attack on civilian population, end quote. So it would be really awesome if you guys could publish a resolution that would put pressure on our federal delegation to stop voting in favor of Israel, because it's illegal and immoral. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the Board? I'm going to start over here tonight. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate the Board and the Budget Committee for all the hard work that was done in getting the city budget passed. I also wanted to congratulate the Pride Committee and all of the community organizers and people who came out for our Pride Festival. It's really an important centerpiece of some of the things that we do in this city to let people know that they belong here and that they are supported here. I have one other thing, but I lost it, so I'm.
Alderman Dowd.
I want to thank the Budget Committee for all the hours that we put into going through the budget, listening to all the departments and divisions. It's not as easy as people think, and it's, I think that we passed a very reasonable budget, and it will be good for the entire city of Nashua.
Alderman Klee.
I'm going to start with by also thanking the Budget Committee, even though I don't necessarily agree with what they've done. They work very hard. They give up a lot of their own time. I personally have asked never to be put on the Budget Committee, even though I will attend almost all of the meetings. But you all do very, very good work, and I know it comes from a right place. So having said that, I also want to, I was sad this weekend that I could not go to the Pride Parade, but I've always walked it, and I've always attended, and I'm very proud that the city does the Pride Parade. And I want to thank the committee members. I know Alderman Kelly is also on that committee that does that, so thank you. I want to speak to a member of the, actually, one of my constituents, that spoke about climate change and so on. The ask is a very big ask, but it's something that can't come from the city. It has to come from the state. The state continues to take more and more power away from the municipalities, so it's not something that we can do. Even something as far as trying to put through a mask law, the state has. Even something as far as trying to put through a mask law, the state has fought over and over whether or not each municipality would be able to do that. So, I would strongly consider speaking to state reps. I'm not sure that I necessarily would want this board to pass something like that because it would be extreme, and we could be actually hurting people who have to get to work and so on. But having said that, I think it comes, again, from a good place, and I think it is worthwhile speaking to some of the state reps on that. I also want to remind those members here and the public, the Historical Society has been doing so many things for World War II, including this past weekend, they had at home and abroad, and our own Alderman, Thibault, was also on that. We got a little snippet, I know the audio didn't work, but we were able to read it as it was going on. It wasn't incredible. I know it'll be up on YouTube, so I hope some people watch it. But this upcoming weekend at 1:00 PM, they're going to be doing a discussion, and I cannot think of his name, so I apologize, but for children of the Holocaust. It's not going to be easy necessarily to listen to, but I strongly recommend people going to the Historical Society this weekend, this Saturday at 1:00 PM, to listen to this discussion, children of the Holocaust. I think it's very important, especially with World War II and the 250th anniversary coming up and so on. And I'm just going to end it with one more thank you to the Budget Committee for all the work that you guys did. Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of things. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the parade portion of the Pride Festival this weekend. I also missed most of the musical performances, but I did swing by the festival later in the day. I was able to peruse the booths and visit with some folks there, and despite of the weather that I fortunately missed, everybody seemed happy and in good spirits. So, that's always pleasant to see. I think we're two years running with downpours on Pride, so, I don't know. Better luck next year, I guess. I, stepping outside of Nashua, I was unable to attend the parade because my son really wanted to go to the celebration of the 100th anniversary of Camp Sergeant, which is just beyond our borders in Merrimack, but I think we'd be remiss to say that nobody from Nashua went to Camp Sergeant. I know I did back in the 90s. And my son had a really great time showing us around and explaining to us everything that's changed since my wife and I were kids, so it was fun. Just as a reminder, because it hasn't been brought up yet, school is out. We congratulated the graduates at our last meeting, but school is officially out for the entire district. This is none more evident than when you drive down somewhere like Burke Street by the Crown Hill Pool. Kids are coming and going, and they are not necessarily going to mind the traffic. And I think all of us, having been kids at one point or another, know that they're never going to. So, you know, let's just drive as if they were still in school coming to and from so that everybody can have a safe and enjoyable summer. Independence Day is next week. Let's leave the celebrations that explode in the sky to the professionals. I know the city will be putting on a really spectacular display that unfortunately, for the first time in several years this year, I'm going to be missing. And, shoot, I had one final thing, and I lost it too. Look what you started, Alderman Kelly.
It's the hour.
It's got to be the hour. I will just leave it at that. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say, unfortunately, I was unable to attend the Pride Parade and celebrations this past Saturday, but I wanted to extend my congratulations to the committee and to everybody who participated. I think it's a wonderful event. I think it's a great thing that the city puts on, and I look forward to hopefully making it next year. And I look forward to its continued success and growth throughout the years. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
So, first, I want to start with gratitude. The Tree Streets Block Party was a great event, so I want to thank residents who were pitching in and part of the event. I want to thank the organizers, who were such a huge part of it, and the city departments, the public works. Solid Waste Truck Driver who came was a great positive influence. He was very helpful. He was engaging the residents. We brought it as part of the Touch a Truck event, and he was really good about collecting everything you could find to squish for other people to watch and enjoy. We had, we tried launching professional wrestling, which was a huge success. The police were very helpful. Flow Free or Die participated with performances, so it was a great community event. I'm glad this trailer full of block party supplies is now being conceptualized. But I would definitely say that it does a lot to bring up the Tree Streets community and to help them identify as such, and I think there's plenty of other areas in the city that could benefit from that as well. I want to recognize and thank the organizers of the Juneteenth event, Shawanda Daniels Williams, Kendra Soucy Smith, and Kimberly Whitaker. They did a great event. It's an important part of our city's heritage to recognize that, and it's an important part of our city's community to recognize people who celebrate that culture, as well as the different leaders we have on our board and in other leadership positions that represent our full culture and remind us of the parts of our heritage that aren't necessarily fun to remember or even reflective of who we want to be as society, but are very necessary for us to continue forward. I wanted to thank the City Clerk's Office for all the extra work that they did in permitting that, because we found out very late that we needed permits, and they were good about marshaling all the city departments to evaluate the event and make sure we were doing everything to the public's best interest. So, I appreciate that as well. I want to recognize Roger Courier, who passed away recently. He was very well-known in the Tree Streets. He was a regular volunteer at Powell. They will be holding observances for him tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM at the Powell Gym. I worked with him for years, and he was a great person. He'd been through a lot. He'd been a committed part of the community, and he will definitely be missed. And then finally, I wanted to invite any members of the board who are present on the Fourth of July. Formerly named Operation During Welcome, now Nashua Veterans Promise is organizing Fourth of July for veterans. Many veterans don't like the fireworks, don't like the loud noises or the huge crowds, so we try to put on different scaled events. This year, we're partnering with Liquid Therapy, and the Midnight Creatives, so there'll be plenty of music, there's good food, and we're hoping that it'll be a great time for veterans who want to celebrate our country and the freedoms that they protected. Thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'll touch on Pride. It was a great event. I brought my kids. I personally didn't see anything inappropriate for them to see. I'm sure, we can all, all the guys in the room can appreciate times when you've been brought to places where you celebrate something that might not be appropriate for a child, and the parents have to make that final decision if they think it's in the best interest of their child to bring them. That's what parental rights are for. Parents can make those decisions if they think something is not a good place for their child to be. And again, the rainbow's not for you. You don't have to go. It's very impossible to regulate the human experience in the brain, and we all have a right to express ourselves the way we want to, as long as it's not violent. Other than that, I'd like to express my appreciation to all the fellow board members that supported the Charter Amendment and to those who didn't. I completely understand why you didn't support it. I disagreed with you on this one, but ultimately, it's in the people's hands, and that's the greatest decider of all, and we all have to live whatever decision that the voters make at the next municipal election. And other than that, Tree Street Block Party was great, and I wish everyone a happy Fourth of July.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I also went to all the events. The block party, Tom Lopez and Shawanda Daniels, as well as Kimberly Whitaker, right? They did a fantastic job. I got a real nice tan, and then I went to Juneteenth and really got a real nice tan because they were all over 100 degrees. It was hot. And also, the block party, the Pride event, I also attended that as well. It was one of the better ones, even though it rained, everybody was happy. It was really a good event, so all the people that participated and contribute to the Pride Parade, I'd like to see them big. It got big since last year, even bigger next year. You want to see happy faces, and that's what I like seeing. So, congratulations to everybody who participated in all those events. But June 13th?
Nineteenth.
June 19th? Juneteenth was 100 degrees, and people were still out there. I mean, I'm telling you, it was, I got touche d'agga. It was a great hot hot day.
I just turned red. I just turned red.
Yeah, I got a doctor. But anyway, thank you all for all those events. There was one other event that I forgot, and that was the senior barbeque that was last Thursday, put on by the Lions Club, and I heard that that was also another huge event, and that's good that we think about the senior citizens as well, so.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, personal privilege, I would like to thank my wife, Diane. Today is our anniversary, 41 years, and even though I'm ill and being on Zoom, I get to share it with you guys. So, I thank Diane for allowing us to do that. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, committee announcements. Alderman Dowd.
I'm going to let Alderman O'Brien do the infrastructure on Wednesday, to announce it anyway, and Thursday is the Joint Special School Building Committee at Nashua High North at 7:00 PM. I just wanted to mention that we are trying to have a joint special meeting, a Board of Education meeting, and a Board of Alderman meeting at the New McCarthy School before it opens, and we will have it in the cafeterium, and we're trying to work that, make sure it happens, and we'll let you know more details.
Other committee announcements?
I have one.
Alderman Timmons.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. The Culture Connection Committee meets tomorrow here at City Hall at 12:00 noon.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow is going to be the infrastructure meeting. Thank you to Alderman Dowd for yielding, and I would like to take a thank you, say a thank you to Alderman Dowd, who has kind of covered for me during my recovery, and I thank him very much. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
Monday, July 1st, we have Personnel Administrative Affairs. The parking legislation will be back, so if you have interest in hearing that discussion, please join us.
I have one other announcement. If I may, thank you, Madam President. This Saturday, the Greater Nashua Area and WAC Branch is having their ballpark at Home Stadium, and it is, everybody looks out for that, so I hope to see as many as you possible at the ballpark on Saturday.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the June 25th, 2024, meeting of the Board of Alderman, so be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes, of course.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
He wants to sit here and sweat.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly. Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
12 VAs, two As.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 10:13 PM. Thank you, everyone.